Okay, folks, we'll go ahead and get started. We're very pleased to have the team from over in Cherokee County with us. Some faces I know about, some I don't. So I'm going to begin on the one that I do know, and that's Josh, who I had some time to bounce around with, and Paul Walton, that introduced everybody. And we want to welcome you and thank you for coming over this way. Board members, Commissioner Heller, Commissioner Holder, myself, Mike Edwards. We have Raymond Williams, who's also, some of you probably know Raymond, he's had some medical problems. And our Commissioner Connie Orr has lost a sister in the last couple of days, so she might show up later for her regular session if not. But we are at the forum here, can't do anything, we're in this work session, we're waiting to hear from you. Thank you for taking the time and having me come over to Cherokee County, we really, really do appreciate that. Josh, it'll be to you, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Didn't expect to get to do an introduction, but I'm happy to. It looks like we've got Ray Rhodes with the tribal council, and Paul Walton, Galsley at Parkwell, Eddie Bussey, and Christopher Sheedy, Mike Superfly, Mrs. Grover, and Lynn Parlow. And then all with the tribal council, gaming commission, and Lynn, I believe, works with the tribal office. And then we've also got Kat and Dee with the small business center here, and then Paul Walton tracking a few dollars, and a few other folks in the area. Looks like we've got a good group now. I think Paul, you can come to the other end. All right. Paul, you're over. Off, I'm ready to start.
Thank you very, very much. Glad to see the Vice Chief. I've made it one time for first, I still, two or three times now, I'm just getting over. Okay, that's great. Welcome, welcome to everybody.
Thank you for having us. Just quickly, we just want to talk a little bit about the Cherokee County project. As you know, it's owned by the eastern band of Cherokee Indians, we wanted to sort of outline for you who we're doing. We are the tribal casino gaming enterprise, we're responsible for all the strategy for the Class II, which has been going, the last tour, which is the Casino Valley, that the tribe has. Our house, our chairman, John House, lives in Asheville, so he was not able to do this this evening, but you've been introduced to everybody else. We also have the tribal gaming commission, which is the regulatory body, we're sort of the police of the gaming forum. And then Caesars is our lately manager. Basically, when we started the business case for why would we build a second facility in Cherokee County, and it was started a very long time ago, we had to take a look at things like the market. And since Cherokee County, that one of the sites that we looked at there, is actually closer to our feeder markets of both downtown Atlanta, as well as possible in Charlotte, we looked at a couple of different pieces of property. There was a piece of property that the tribe had anticipated by, but unfortunately, because of the infrastructure costs sitting in there, we recommended a switch in sites. We finally recommended the Palmer site, Mr. Donald Palmer, and that we closed on that and sold us this property, and that's near the Snap-on Bridge in Snap-on, so it's very close to Mount Murphy. With this particular business model for a facility of this size, we're going to have, excuse me, cash flow is going to be very strong, and we're going to have a rapid debt retirement, which feeds into our overall debt retirement strategy for the resort in Cherokee. We went into conventional financing with a term loan. We ended up wrapping up all of our debt into one payment loan, if you will. And then we also had to take a look at whether or not delaying the decision would lessen our return at the end of the day, and so was yes. We had three different looks at the market, which we typically do. We had an internal look, we have a partner, Caesars, taking a look at what the market will bear, and then we hired a third party. So it's not something we do just, it's not solely a decision made on just one set of data points. But anyway, there again, Cherokee County has tremendous geographical potential, putting us closer to those adult populations. The adult population within 150 miles of Murphy is actually 26% greater than the adult population within that same radius of Cherokee. We had 2.3 total of work card members, that's just our casino player, one of the club cardholders within 180 miles of Cherokee County, and we're only getting about 476,000 of those at our resort today, right? So we have about 40% of those customers that are known to Caesars, already known customers that were not captured. So there's a lot of upside, and there were a lot of reasons why it didn't get sense to put a property in Cherokee County. The project is getting ejected about 900 FTEs and close to $40 million into payroll every Cherokee county in the region. I don't know, maybe you guys are familiar with Palmer track, but it's relatively flat, especially when you look at some of the other trust property we had to choose from. It's pretty quickly buildable. We were going to, we had at one point talked about doing a temporary facility and later converting that to where now we're going to do a phase facility where we open a phase one, which is a portion of the casino floor, which is gaming and ancillary services only. The second phase will open up the hotel, and then the third phase opens up the final piece of the property. We're looking at about initial opening of about 50,000 square feet with an easily buildable 10,000 kind of hidden behind the wall, 300 hotel rooms. And it'll have table games and all the traditional things that you think of when you think of the casino. We're going to be spending, we've been approved for a $110 million loan. It doesn't sound like a lot when compared to what we just spent on Master Plan, but it would give us a nice facility. And, okay, we'll get us a very nice facility, and we'll be able to, as soon as we get our general contractor selected and get through some of those design processes, then we'll be able to get back and run very quickly. But, the reason for building a hotel, of course, hotel is very closely related to our revenue stream. Typically, in the casino world, if you can get a patron to spend the night, then you can increase your revenue by 1.5 times what you would otherwise. But anyway, when it comes to the franchise hotels that exist in the Murphy and Andrews area, there's the inventory there is very small, about 269 rooms. So we knew that we needed to have an onsite hotel. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about hotels in just a second here. The average age of that product is kind of old, not horrible or anything, it's just, you know, it's not something that was built yesterday. And even if we wanted to, the current casino inventory, the amount of demand we're going to have at this property will exceed the available inventory in the market. And in addition, there's some business strategies, because right now, at the resort with 1102 rooms, we're still fronting about 99% occupancy, we're having to deal with a lot of people. That's in addition to the contracts that we have with external hoteliers in the town of Cherokee, we have quite a few contracts, and we, I think we're on pace to purchase about 60,000 room nights from the external. We'll run that just like we would at our hotel with our patrons, and most of them we did. And we'll do the same thing when we get to Cherokee County, for sure. The hotel data that we shared is just basically, if you take a look back at 2000, those are the external hotel rooms that we used because we didn't have a hotel onsite. And if you get up to 2002, that's the first year we had opened our first tower. So we had 55,000 internal rooms that we used, but we still use 56,000 external rooms, because as we continue to grow this, we continue to grow the number of rooms. And then if you take a look at 2005, you'll see a drop in external rooms, that's when we brought our second tower online. And we had 148,000 internal room nights and 42,000 external room nights. And then if you take a look down there at 2011, you can see where we brought our third tower onboard, right? So we've got 385,000 room nights available, right? And we're still looking, and that year was low for external, so it was 22,000. And as you can see, we're on pace for about 56,000 to 60,000 external room nights this year. So it's a huge part of the business hotel in Cherokee. Having a hotel in Cherokee. We're going to use about 56 acres of the property, 90-plus acres that we purchased. The completed structure will have over 1,000 slot machines and probably 75 tables, very similar in a smaller size to what we have today. And there again, that 60,000 is very big gaming. Ray, you want to talk about the structure, you want me to keep going?
Oh, okay. Briefly. The construction, it's a small facility, looks like what we started with in 1987 in Cherokee. It's, the actual construction is relatively simple, slab-on-ray, structural steel package that we tell, may have some new calumnies, and again, two years to build out. Right now, we're, as Tavola mentioned, we're wrapping up some of the financial details of Andrews, but just environmental assessments continue, so we're anticipating just a smooth now. That's notwithstanding the winters, we're smug to predict, but again, a couple years from now, we should be able to. I don't know exactly until we get our contractor on board, they'll really put their expertise and pencil the paper and give us the exact schedule. We'll be a design build project, but we'll select a contractor, they'll select an architect, we'll go from there. Again, simple, quite a bit of dirt to move, because we've got good partners helping us, DOT and other folks negotiating right away, insisting with some of the grid winning and engineering, so the stars are aligning pretty well for a relatively smooth project, so I don't anticipate anything. Before I turn it back over to Paul, any construction specific questions that I can answer?
I have just a few, and please, I should apologize for a lot of things. You said Caesars, and you know, this is just from my understanding, but they're Harrah's, Harrah's, Harrah's.
A few years ago, I think it's about a decade now, the Harrah's purchased Caesars, then they changed their name from Harrah's Entertainment to Caesars Entertainment, same company, that we still plan for that to be a Harrah's property, but it's all under the Caesars umbrella.
Okay, all right. And with this too, you showed an interesting profile there with regard to external rooms, you know?
Yes, amazing.
We see, and there's several things in the offing, and maybe this is not time to say it, but you know, we have a penny right now on the prospect of a quarter K.
Right.
And I don't know if that's been in the mix or not, but we're in the middle of a visioning process with it. And I know that Cherokee County's already gone through and established their transportation plan, and Grand County is a part of that in trying to make a decision about quarter K project. It's a hot issue, hot button issue here, and without a shaft of doubt. And I'm wondering, I don't know if this is a fair question, but I was really wondering about the transportation piece. And then I have to ask another question, forgive me, I don't want to commit anything, but I understand that the Kakawatra is going to be opening a place in Cleveland County. Is that true, or is that just in the process for what?
The Kakawatra have, they've got a long way to go before they open it to somewhere. They don't have land and trust in North Carolina, so that's a part of the process to look at acquiring a piece of land, going through the Department of Interior process, Bureau of Innen and Fair process, ultimately probably National Gaming Association, the Gaming Commission will have to authorize it, they'll have to work a deal with the state of North Carolina. The understanding we have, over 100 of the representatives have signed on to a letter opposing that coming into North Carolina, as well as we understand Governor McCorory is coming out against it. So they've got a long way to go before that's going to be a reality.
You know, really, Vice Chief, I shouldn't have said that, yes, because y'all would be doing this, I don't believe, you know, about this investment in this area, if that's going to happen, because you mentioned Charlotte, and you know, you look to that, but I've had the specialists and folks since I heard that you were going to come in to talk with us and want to understand. But our interest is in Grand County, and the benefit to be reaped there. And it sounds like it's going to be the hospitality industry primarily, and then we're against this, the issue of infrastructure, and being able to come up with enough to be able to do any type of development. So, you know, we're looking to that, we're very interested in that, and you know that, because of the job situation in Kansas. Unfortunately, we're still noted, unless it's changed, Paul, we're still, you know, the highest in unemployment in the state of North Carolina. So we're excited about it, and I did have a few things right here, the logical capacities that are going to be required, you've already rejected those, and you're still looking perhaps at the 56,000 number external?
When you look at, let's get back to that slide, so I'll be very clear about what that means. This is what we do with new Cherokee, okay? This is based off of what we've done in Cherokee. And you can extrapolate the data, which we've already begun to do, and we've, our best guess for the number of rooms that we're going to need in addition to the 300 hotel rooms that are, the 300 rooms that we have onsite, is between 20,000 to 25,000 room nights the first year. I mean, we, yes, we are taking a look at that, we know what that's probably going to look like. There again, without any macroeconomic economic factors kind of in play that could really alter that game. Truthfully, and I don't think the Vice Chief would mind me saying this, we know that we get more rooms onsite already, but for us, because of the debt that we currently have at the resort, even getting $110 million to, for approval was a bit of a challenge, especially Blesser Hearts in the election year. So we were very lucky to get what we had, or what we got, but in a perfect world, we would have gone out with another 200 rooms.
Okay. I don't mean to be asking questions.
No, no, no. These are all questions that you're trying to answer.
But, you know, the issue of transportation.
Yeah, I mean, what is your question on that?
In the DOT, you know, I sit on the rural planning organization through Southwest Commission, and I haven't seen anything to the effect that this, there's been anything said about that being a priority. Is that already established as a priority somewhere?
It is actually, we have a little bit of information on it here. Just so that you know, this is kind of like, this is a design build project, which I'm sure that I said, but this is kind of a 3D, a little bit of 3D look of what it would like if USA had it down there at the bottom, and then the casino parkway. Their role is of course to build bridge, they're going to be getting out in January, also building the parkway, and it's a two lane up to the property line, and then we'll build it, of course, the property line on. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, construction schedule, we're going to spring a 2015 completion on that. And this is a conceptional plan.
You've done something to get it up there, because we're going to have 20 years.
How big a project?
20 years for projects, and this has been expedited, and I'm all for it, understand it.
I really, you know, it seems like the, at least from what we're hearing, it has to do with the number of jobs that we're.
Okay.
It's all about, you know, the 900 jobs. Our original estimate was about 800, but that was before we, table games is very labor-intensive. And so when we went from 50 to 75 table games, it actually increased our FTE count by 100.
I'm going to ask you a question, and I'm going to leave you far.
No, that's fine.
The issue is quarter K, has it been a part of quarter K?
I'm language, I apologize.
Has anybody, has that been in the conversation?
You know, I'd like to say that is not, that is not a part of this business plan, this business model. We're aware of it, we actually talked about it on the way down here, but it did not affect, I know, Greg, the assumptions made about our decision for this second property. So I would say, it's obviously a big multi-year project, and if it becomes reality, I think it would help us, it would help everybody. And I know that's a huge, huge project.
Well, another tribe's on record, we support quarter K.
Yes, sir.
I think the resolution was passed to that effect, and I sit on the planning mortgage, doing the transportation plan for Grand County.
Yes, sir.
And so we're going to, you know, pros and cons of it, I think, beneficial more than purpose, so.
Well, don't take it against the, I'm just starting to figure it out, you know, we're.
I look out for Grand County.
Well, I see how it is, and that's what we're going to do. And I appreciate you saying that, I know that we were going to have some idea.
But I think the emphasis here, of course, is Cherokee County, the roads and the corridors that are coming through there now. We don't, and I sure won't speak for the planning effort, but we don't see a lot of pull having to come over 129 or 28 for this area to get to that area.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean in the bigger picture, that quarter K even for this community, and what the tribe may do in the future here in this community, is definitely a consideration for us, because you've got to transport people, and you want to do it in a very, you know, a very good and safe and economical way. So those are conversations on down the line, if we do anything here in Grand County, the tribe, but for this project, it wouldn't be part of that necessarily. We know it will help, but the tribe is surely supporting quarter K, and want to help with that revenue at home, Greg.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And, you know, basically, we're trying very hard to be a good community partner with the county. We've been meeting with his sales team and several other folks from the county for a long time now, ever since, even before we got the project approved, simply because, you know, you don't know what you don't know. We didn't know 17, 18 years ago what the casino was going to do, or how it was going to change the landscape of Cherokee. And so we've been trying really hard to meet these folks to partner up and have subcommittees that deal with things like public safety, addies on that committee, or infrastructure, raise on that committee, or workforce, and economic development, China. We're just trying to get ahead of what we know has happened in Cherokee, and prepare Cherokee County, and take advantage of as many synergies as we can. I think it's really important that, you know, for Grand County to remember that two things. Number one, we already have folks that travel back and forth to the resort every day to work. This will give them the opportunity to travel the less distance to work, if they want to transfer, they'll have the first opportunity to do that. And secondarily, at any given time, especially right now, we still, we're running with about 100 open positions, so we're hiring. So, you know, tell your community members, in the casino, it's not for everyone, we know that, just like it's not going to be for everybody in Cherokee County, because it is a 24-hour business, it's very highly regulated, in fact, we're second only to nuclear in terms of the regulations that we have to live with, and that's fine, it should be highly regulated. But there's a lot of opportunity, you can actually really have a good career in the casino industry, if you don't mind working with other people playing. So, you know, and if you would help us, you know, continue to get the word out, we continue to hire. We've had some folks from Cherokee County that have already come up and started working for us, making that drive every day in anticipation of going back and being able to work closer to home. We would encourage you to tell your constituents that that's a certain option for me as well. That's about 30 minutes out of the drive time if they were to, you know, switch properties. But we are here to answer any questions you may have about this, that's kind of, take a look at the market. So really, we're going to be pushing. What you do when you have a two-stop strategy, two properties, is you push farther to the east for the resort, you push farther to the west for the Cherokee County. And then these are just some images, this is not set in stone, but, you know, we're looking to build something down there that everybody can be proud of, and it really blends in with the landscape, and it's not too big, especially on the outside of the, the casino floor will be, it always is, but you know, the city will be, we'll have a nice finish to it.
I have a whole, again, please, my case junction, is the Broadman, is that what it is, that probably sufficient for Yama?
Well, I can address that, but here, Broadman, we've got, you know, we plan to connect this with some larger, some of the Cherokee, using the dark fiber network, that color on top, and also part of the pulse glass, so we're doing a cost comparison right now. So the capacity is there, the fiber's there, it's just a matter of provisioning lighting and the bandwidth needed is significant, we also have that, you shovel this, you do it that way, we're going to, we're also going to.
I'm sure you're familiar, I'm just going to go ahead and let out, you saw the pop, the pop we had across the street?
Yeah, that's just the coating.
Yeah, that's a, that's something that we're going to try and learn to develop, and it's not small potatoes, if you know what I mean.
No, it's not.
Because we're pretty much having a ping back to Cherokee County now, you know, so what it's going to do, I just had to ask that as well, if we could be in the picture on that with any type of, well, I'm going to leave it at that, Mr. Rose.
Well, I will help you out as I can, we just have to take our, get off, put our technology at on, but obviously, we have fibers for pulse method, and I believe pulse method is a great outfit, and if you're using competitive products, they can meet your technical needs, feel free to contact me, we'll explore, because as we buy the fiber and build these two facilities, or once that happens, we can come off at any location point, consider, you know, maybe a combination of both of those for a quick, even when you need it. My, my combination, the Vice Chief, Chief, members of the power development, you know, and how many of us cost money, we have a long-term view, we know we have to build, be competitive with, have best students, all of us, because running competition would have to, this is where I can.
Well, I want to make one more comment, and I hope some of the other commissioners here, anyone else, will make a, make a comment to it. But I've watched the growth, I've lived in this area for a good while, I made it from Grand County, got displaced because of the military life that my dad had, and I came back, and I watched Harrah's, and I watched the commitment of the Cherokee, the band, with what commitment they had to the communities that were surrounding, surrounding the casino. And, you know, first of all, steps has been kicked in, but that's been met, that's always been done. And the fighting for city, I just want to tell you, I appreciate that, because it has made a tremendous difference in a lot of different ways, and I think a lot of different ways, probably not a whole lot of people know about it, but I hope that that will continue, and I don't know if it's going to change the complexion of anything with the addition to, you know, to the gaming, or it's going to be something that, you know, that you're going to have to look at again. But I just want to go on, you know, and I speak for myself, and I know that Grand County's benefited, and I just appreciate the tribe and all that they've done in that area with that commitment. So I want to wish you the best with it. I would not make a good employer at Harrah's, I would not. So, you know, that is going to be an opportunity, we're going to look at it in the standpoint of traveling tourism, looking at it in the standpoint of getting, we have adequate roadway, safe transportation for those employees who are at point A to point B for work. And that's one of the big issues that I, that I had opportunity to, to learn some things about at the NCAA C conference in Greensboro a couple of weeks ago. If you can't have those big economic players of your community, then you make sure you have the transformation, transportation means to get them to those jobs. So that's going to be a big push for us. If it's quarter K, all well and good, and I appreciate what you're saying, you know, don't go tied and wagged with a start that doesn't exist, you know, if that start doesn't happen, then you go with it. So with that, Mike, I'm bad to talk, so, you know, if anyone else, Commissioner Heller will tell y'all about me, I'm bad to talk, so, you know, can I have any other comments or anything else with that? But again, I certainly appreciate Vice Chief and the staff, and them coming out to be with us, and seeing. You have a question for us? Make it easy, please.
I would find out if nine hundred dollars is enough.
Yeah, that's right. But it's not, it's not going to be that good.
You know, our experience in, you know, in Cherokee, we didn't, as Paul said, we didn't know what the future looked like when I stepped, but we've grown, we opened probably 1,000, 200, 200, now we have 2,600.
Wow.
Benefit package, and I, there's no reason, you know, some things are out of control, national economy, world events, and things like that, but with our partner, Caesars, who's the biggest gaming agency, we have 40-plus properties around the world, you know, we know how to do this, and we have great jobs, many employees, and many of our employees, you know, come into our facilities, it's a first, it's always a formal environment, and, you know, what, many of them, many of them have not been a job at all, it's been a long-term career, some of them are here for a little, two years, they'll retire if they want to retire, 20, so I'm confident we'll have a similar experience here, you know, someone don't vet, notwithstanding, so, you know, I'm confident in Grand County, even though it's not in your county, we don't have the future goals, and your folks will be working there, so.
Right. Thank you very much. Mr. Man, you've done it.
And now, obviously, we're going, Grand County, my office and the economic development office, willing to, have found many warehouses, we're right there, we're willing to work a lot of time.
Here comes another question, I'm sorry. Paul Walton's going to penalize you away.
I was so close.
Yeah. What'd you say?
I was so close.
So close. But with the, with the aspect of, you train your employees, do you depend on community colleges in any way with that? Because that's going to, and I'm just saying, it's going to move from the catchment area of Southwestern Community College now, is there going to be a effort then to take that into the field of Tri-County Community College?
Yeah, that's one of the things that really will impact a lot of this training, that we're going to be doing, and for the tribe, working with the tribe on this, is we will have a training program over here, just let them gather from there.
Okay.
So we're not going to be having everybody back all the way to Grand County, to Grand County over to Mainland, so we'll be doing that here, just like we were there.
Okay. Or this is net, or is it just something Tri-County's going to take on, it's all for the tribe?
It'll probably be something that we'll be doing step by step, there'll be some parts of it that we'll be able to do through what's known as our human resource development classes that are actually free, some of it will be done that will be more specialized, than just talking with some of our counterparts over Southwestern, they're Their grants of others will, that will help with assistance on, you know, getting funding for training. So there will be, according to what's different, we're at that point, we'll be working on it.
Okay, that's great. All right, that's pretty much answered because you know, Southwest, you know, Southwest Community College is a great institution. You know, we have a great front yard in our backyard, we see that. Well, anything else, Billy? Again, thank you so very much. I don't know what time it is, I ran off without my phone, I'll give one thank you without it. But let's do that. How much time do we have, Miss Ford? About 15 minutes, okay. Any other comments, questions?
So much for that.
I appreciate you all coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have a big greeting, young, we'll do that. Maybe we rate resets and if it's another computer reset, if it comes up, we'll wait, go back and then we'll know next time.